That with, with the, the February 13th. Yes, we have black.
No black. I wish.
I got one, I'm sorry. Okay, with that. It's a total lead all the time. Okay. I'm trying to think back to that one from the beginning. Um, Mary. Okay, I don't know if you do it yet. Do you want me? Right? You look like a child. Okay. Okay, we're going to. I was down here. Okay. What was wrong with me? Oh, we're, we're not. Okay. So, you made me the first thing you had to do. Well, anyway. I'm on a time. Let's try. They're about to take me there. Take me there, we go over to the door. Well, I'm gonna take y'all one way, y'all one way. Y'all just watch too, y'all some beautiful people.
You know, it's definitely.
Uh, who's trying to? Okay, this is my, yeah. I got you. Yeah, man. You turn up completely, you get down, right? That's it, that's it. Here, be careful. Okay. Okay. That's it, that's early. It's me, 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 me. Which one? And right, right? That is me. What is that, ready? And now, we'll be back in a minute. I'm going to show the world what I'm doing. That's why I got to tell me I'm late on the dot dot. I'm usually here. How did you go? It was a great show. They told me, uh, he showed. He did. All right, everybody. What's it? And okay. Well, it's. I think. I'm good. Everyone. I'm gonna be right out. I will tell her. It's happened. We need to shoot. She's there. We don't want to see it. Who's on this? This is. She was so chicken. She's. Actually, I think. Right now, I'm. It's perfect. It's okay. Um, it's on. I'm still. Thank you all, my God. I'm coming through. You were trying to stop that. I'm able to walk in front of person information on this part. If you didn't touch me at all. Okay, please wait a second. Don't be long. Come on, I mean. I'm getting started. I even. It's been a while. Oh. Yes, I'm sorry, no, I'm. It's all. Actually, I was on. Yeah, I have a right to figure. You know. This is. The sound. It was on there. Push. Now, she's been here for a year. Just. See. Okay. Okay, stop. Oh, God. What is happy, how long has she been? And you know, you might, you know, you do all kinds of things. She's great. We do this. No.
Hey, what's going on, sir? How you been? Hey, how are you? How's your, how's your wife? Good. Uh-huh. Well, good. Keep your little prayers.
Who's that? Who's that? So, I'm. Who's, you read Reggie's journal? Look at her, she read Reggie's journal. She read Reggie's journal. Your hair. Now, I'm not nervous, I don't have that. We got you, because she's. You got it. Now, I'm trying to not nervous right here. You said no, I have. Oh, babe, keep me. I just wanted to. Forget it. I'll be there. Who's that? You might just make me know where you want it. I was like, oh, I'm. You got it, boy. But he answered it. On those. Yeah, you know, it's. Just start with you. You don't have a prayer, mate. It's a ninety-two, okay? No, you're saying, don't say grace. That's all, sir. I'll go. We can work out. I think we should do it. Okay, I'm. That. Okay. You know. Hold on. Okay, okay. That's something. I think it's. Oh, that's. How you doing? It. She. Did you know? Should we talk about her first? We're not. Yeah, just decide. There, there. Okay. Oh, you guys. I am. Okay. Oh, good. Yeah, very big. If you want to. You're. It's something. Okay. Oh, my God. Anything about you? Yes, it goes. So. I just. You got the man. Yes, that was. I didn't know. Be. Oh, yeah. They'll see it. Sorry. We figured that out.
I must go to see you.
You saw my problem.
This is a lot. They're. I will be. Jerry, now let us go. To see that. Okay, all right. All right.
I'm glad you were earlier. I love it.
I have a. A little long. Oh, yeah. But it's the. You better try. I have my. Very extreme. Okay. Those. Give me.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Always. Yes, sir. Yes. Seven. Seven. Okay. So, you. I'm going to check. You're supposed to.
I know.
Thank you so much. First. This is. Okay. This. I'm here three thirty. We can turn it off. Just. You got the voice. We'll take it. I can turn it off. I'm. I'm not gonna take it. Okay. Thank you. Well. If I had. Appreciate it, Charlie. All right, how you doing? Yeah. We can. We got. And we got. And so, we have. Okay. 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 You got email. We kind of see this. Well, just bring it up. Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay, okay. 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 I mean, I just. Okay. First.
Good evening.
Oh, that was dumb.
Excuse me?
You speak today?
Did you speak to me?
You did say hello when you came to.
I heard you say something about your parents used to be your. I wasn't, I know you were talking about me.
You know, I wait because I'm looking for.
I'm doing okay yourself? I enjoyed it.
They should be good.
One three, we're going to start at six o'clock P U. The time is now five fifty nine P U. We ask that please buy us all of your devices or, I suppose, we return them off. We begin quietly to the business of self. We're about to start and welcome to the Southern City Council. Time is now six o'clock P U. And this meeting of the Southern City Council is here now called for. At this time, we're going to ask that Councilman Carmichael, please allow us with our invitation for the evening.
Please allow. Do you all be looking for this beautiful city and all citizens in it? We thank you, the mayor and council. Do you all be asking you not us to be in good faith and honor? Do you all be asking you not us to deliberate peacefully divine with most solutions to our issues? I surrender my.
Amen. Thank you. Those all stand up and please leave it. Pleasure to be here in the right of the United States of America. At two hundred and forty-four, Richard James. In the middle with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, at this time, we're going to ask that our clerk, please prepare our call, please.
Good evening. President Young. Councilwoman Harville. Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman Jane. Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Jensen. Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Councilwoman Jane.
Thank you, Madam Court, for the roll call. Let's turn our attention to the agenda for the evening. The character trait of the month is dream. If one dreams without leaps of imagination, we lose the excitement of possibilities. Let's all remember our character trait of the month, dream. Our council, this time, we are at a portion of our agenda where there's approval of agenda. We have one addition where we'll have to have executive session that will take place after the mayor's report.
Well, part privilege. If this is the executive session, I request it.
Yes, sir.
Council has asked for continuous pending some more developments in the case. So we can exclude that portion of the agenda tonight.
But we have another request for executive session by council department.
I understand. I just want to clarify my portion.
Thank you, which I'm still anticipating that we're going to need. Okay, so council, we're going to ask that we add an executive session following the mayor's report to our agenda. With that addition, are there any additions, deletions, or any comments regarding our agenda for the evening?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
As President, I would ask that the citizens concerned involving Mrs. Cynthia Burton.
Yes, sir.
Be moved to the mayor's report.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other further additions, deletions, comments regarding our agenda? With that said, is there a motion to approve the agenda with those adjustments and the proper additions for moving program? Is there a second? All right, please allow me to reflect that it's been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and properly seconded by Councilwoman James to approve our agenda with the adjustments and the additions. Are ready for question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Jensen.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, council, for your votes. Now we'll move on to the approval of our consent agenda. Council, please turn your attention to our consent agenda for Tuesday, April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. We have a total of ten items up for approval on our consent agenda for the evening. Item number one, to approve a budget amendment for expenditures in Fund Eleven, state gas tax for parking lot signs. And four-way compacts in the amount of ten dollars. Number two, to approve a purchase order with spring come from the public works department in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. To the funding dispersed from account number eleven point six two zero zero dash five one six five zero to purchase nine parking lot signs. Item number three, to approve a purchase order with East Trading West Investments LLC for the public works department in the amount of four thousand nine dollars with funding dispersed on account number eleven point six two zero zero point five one six five zero to purchase twenty-eight four-way compacts. Item number four, to approve resolution R one eight-two dash twenty-one slash twenty-two authorization to approve the Semin Arts and History Community mural project through the Alabama State Council on the Arts. Item number five, to approve Big Ten Network filming application. Item number six, to approve resolution R one seventy-six dash twenty-one slash twenty-two to approve a beer wine sales tax contract with Avenue. Item number seven, to approve resolution R one seventy-seven dash twenty-one slash twenty-two to approve a gas sales tax contract with Avenue. Item number eight, to approve resolution R one seventy-eight dash twenty-one slash twenty-two to approve an alcohol sales tax contract with Avenue. Item number nine, to approve a general agreement between the National Parks Service South to Montgomery National Historic Trail and the City of South. And item number ten, to approve a purchase order with Smith and Brothers Construction for Council Victoria Avenue in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars with funding dispersed from account number eleven point six two zero zero dash fifty-one six four zero point one to resurface Land Fair Drive. Council, both these two items that are on our consent agenda for the evening. Are there any questions, comments regarding those items? Hearing questions or comments, is there a motion to approve our consent agenda for Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two? Is there a second? Please allow the minister to reflect that it was moved by Councilwoman Jamie Thomas and properly seconded by Councilman Michael Johnson to approve our consent agenda for Tuesday, April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
I vote yes on all items with the exception of I'm standing on item number five, number six, number seven, and number eight.
Councilwoman Harville. Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes, on one three, Madam, and I'm standing on number two for the possibility of personal education.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Council, Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, councilors, for your votes. All the items on the consent agenda are approved for the evening. Now we move on to our next item of the agenda, which is the approval of the council meeting minutes. And we'll ask that this time be here for our clerk.
Good evening, council and all who are here. Council, you should have before you the minutes of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. These minutes are before you for your approval. Are there any corrections or questions? Council, you should have before you the minutes of the April twelfth, regular meeting minutes. Sorry about that. You should have before you the meeting minutes of April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. These minutes are before you for your approval. Are there any questions or corrections to be made?
Council, we've heard from the clerk, are there any additions, deletions, or comments regarding the minutes? Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes, I just want to say I had to correct something on the meeting.
So the version we received has been correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, council, we have our minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-two up for approval. Is there a motion to approve stamp minutes? Is there a second? All right, please allow the minister to reflect that it was moved by Councilwoman Christie Thomas and properly seconded by Councilwoman Atkins Jensen to approve our minutes from April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael. Councilwoman Jane. Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Jensen. Councilwoman Jamie Thomas. Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Very good. Thank you, council, for your votes. Our minutes are approved. Now, at this time, we'll have our announcements for the evening. And we're going to start, I'm going to ask that Councilwoman Lisa James come forward. If she can give us explanation why it looks so good out there tonight. And so I believe she can help us with some clarity as to why county chambers feels and looks so good this evening.
First thing, can I go down?
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm so excited. Everybody that knows me know I love young people. That's my passion. And today, I want to introduce you to our new Southern city ambassadors.
My name is Sophia. I'm kind of combined.
My name is Ashley. I'm from Alabama.
Hi, I'm Sophia.
You laugh, so you got to take a breath. Oh, no, I already know, the pears are here. They are here for you, not the annual tree. These young people actually, you want to enter the year tonight. But I want you all to wish them well and welcome them, because guess what? They are going to be your voice of the day. They're going to show us up. So get ready, because they are going to do some awesome things in the city. And also, I tried to get every school, we didn't get a chance to get anyone from Keith, but I'm still working on Keith now. Okay? So guys, this is your new summer thing, Ambassador. They have to leave, y'all, so can they leave?
Councilwoman Jane.
Oh, okay.
One second, before they leave, can all of y'all stand together so people see you? That's right, and collect the group. It's right there. Come on, yeah, come on. Alright.
Oh, forget it, I'm going to do it, my God. John, you get it? Get it?
Councilwoman James.
Yes, ma'am.
I love you.
Okay. Yes, I'm going to let you know, y'all, y'all do my thinking, yeah. There is your man right here. Your man right here, he may be there.
One, two, three, say Selma Youth Ambassador. One, two, three.
Selma Youth Ambassador.
Yeah, let's do that again, one, two, three.
Selma Youth Ambassador.
Alright, so y'all, we're gone.
And I thought President Young and Councilwoman Johnson would be working on this activity as well in the rest of the county. And to begin it, we'll be having our first meeting next week. And they chose to meet at Mexican and Democrat. So, no need, if I don't want to sit down and see them, we're going to do it. But our first meeting will be next week, they're going to text me and tell me what time, I'm going to give them, I do, to tell me what time they want to do. Okay? Alright.
Let's get them on the ground.
I want to see how we operate. It's like a long mistake, but I know sometimes I go to work, who can't text me and really get that on way. I love speaking every last one of you.
And before they sit down, let's have my mother dead stand up. Let's have our parents stand up. Now, on this call. Thanks, we know it takes a whole bit of the chicken. So thank you. And Councilwoman James, thank you for organizing this activity. Let's get Councilwoman James around the court. Tomorrow is today, you can see it right there. And so I think tomorrow and today both look really good. So let's, thanks, thank you all so much. Alright. That's a great way to kick off our meeting for tonight. Um, at this time, yes, sir. Um, yes, sir, I think Councilwoman Jane, uh, Jane Thomas, we're going to come to you. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas.
Hey, Selma. Um, I'm a great officer. It's very important that we get our youth involved in our council, but I cannot teach. I want to give a great standing ovation to one young lady at Leesville, Fort Smith. Her name is Adrian How. This young lady did a great day for the City of Selma. She would receive a scholarship in the honor of Alexis, Alexis scholarship coming from Alexis's mother, Jo Anne Hannah Walker. Also, we will be having community in Fort Smith, which we will be starting. We will be starting our sixth year in Fort Smith, where we want to bring our community together. Our district is one of the districts that have a lot of power. And the bosses have inherited our word and have a lot of love. And families have lost their family members to gun violence. Also, we will be having a family member, he got to talk about his loved ones that didn't have. So Saturday on April thirty, twenty twenty two, August seventy first, we will be having a unity of gun violence be stopped in our community. Each of the districts are part of the gun violence in their area. So we are going to be bringing something new that we are going to be part of. And a lot of our youth are going to be a part of what we do with the City of Selma. Also, Adrian, Adrian Anna Powell will also have her essay put in the paper. That is a very strong essay, that's a high school graduate who's going to Troy University. And she expresses herself on gun violence, and I think this will be a part of our here for our unity to win.
Let's get Miss Powell around the court and her attitude. I always remember Miss Powell as well. And so, um, that's really, really great that our family can teach her to live in that way. So we salute the family and we salute you, Councilwoman Thomas, in keeping that neighbor alive and by announcing that scholarship. But thank you so much. Uh, now, Councilwoman Johnson.
I just want to acknowledge the first president of the state. I wanted to take time to congratulate our own state mayor, Mayor Perkins, for being the president of the Black State of Alabama. This is the state of Alabama with a black male president, making a president of all here. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
Congratulations, congratulations. Councilwoman James.
Okay, one last announcement for me. On May the fourth, at twelve o'clock noon, for those who don't know, Selma High have been in Leesville for fifty years plus. Last year would be the fiftieth year, and due to COVID, we cannot celebrate the anniversary. So on next Wednesday, at twelve o'clock noon in courtyard, we're asking all alumnus to, class representatives, send at least five to six alumnus to come and have lunch with us. We will have some of them, have our principals there to speak to you all. And also, we just want to celebrate Selma High being in this for fifty long years. The first class was nineteen seventy one, and our mayor was the first graduate class in Selma High School. So if you all know anyone that graduated from nineteen seventy one until two thousand twenty one, please tell them to get a representative to come by, we're going to take some pictures, we're going to send some farewell, not farewells, we're going to do some progress on being in this for fifty years. If you need to know any information, just contact Selma High or myself. And this is a part of City Board. City Board is a organization that came to Selma to do some things in our school system. And they are one of the main sponsors of this fifty years of our school system.
Alright, Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
The main part, I need to thank the business, I would like to thank the business for the last six years that has been supporting me under our business together. I want to give a big shout out to Pooh, our lady, David Delight, Cash and Care. Hi, Selma. Council, come, I could visit. Also, I would like to thank the Johns family. Also, I'd like to thank several other people that have been very strong with making this happen. And also to my council people that are part of this, even the former council people have kept this going. So I just like to thank everybody there. And plus, Z can be B to that, B could have been there for every time we have a benefit, they're helping, speaking to them. So I want to thank them for all the things they do. Also, I want to thank a non-downer for being a sponsor for this scholarship out of another state. And I just want people to know how rich people are, online, to me, I'm.
Thank you, thank you. And just one announcement for everybody to add on the Capitol's safety date. Dr. Banora Matiette is scheduled to be here. On this Friday, if you can't change the global IPM, April twenty ninth, we'll have a press conference. We'll be asking everyone to please support and participate in Dr. Banora Matiette on May the fourteenth, twenty twenty two. I think that concludes all of our announcements. So now we'll move on to our citizens' concerns. And we're asking that our citizens, remember, they have five minutes to make their presentation. And at this time, we only have one citizen on our agenda, and that is Mrs. Thomas C. Johnson, here to discuss a feed waiver. Oh, sorry, this is, alright.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Johnson.
I want to thank the council for allowing us to come in. Let you know what we're doing in the community. One of the things, if you don't know, I am Thomas C. Johnson, I am the Secretary Treasurer of the Michael D. Johnson Foundation. My sister is, you know, actually, she started written director, that is, Mrs. Yolanda Edgerton. Michael D. Johnson Foundation is a travel market unit. We have been doing things in the community for the thirteen years now. We actually sponsor about four events a year. Our last one was the Health Band, so we did that for a year. Formerly, we did a lot of events at, a lot of events at college. Until we found that the Y M C A of Creighton needed our help. And so now, we do most of all of our, most of our, we're there. Um, the reason we're here tonight is that at our events, sometimes we have vendors. And until we moved to the Y, we were not charged. But once we moved to the Y, we made, uh, our vendors had to pay a fee. And that was fifty dollars by the way, we were going to, you had to pay fifty dollars for our vendors. Well, we did that for a couple of years, but this year, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, we were charged double. And that would make it be hundred and twenty five dollars, because we always asked twenty five for the Y, because they be, you know, they opened the building up, they, um, passed that. And so they get twenty five, so fifty gets fifty. Well, we're going to pay, of course, they told us we had to pay a hundred instead of it. That automatically puts our vendors at this, um, they can't pay anything, you know, at a hundred and twenty five dollars per fee. So we're here before the council to ask if you would exempt us, since we are a nonprofit, if you would exempt our vendors so that they don't have to pay a hundred and twenty five dollars to attend or to participate in our event. And that basically is why we're here tonight.
Alright, um, just a quick question, is this event open to the public? Is it free to the public?
It is free to the public.
Yes, free to the public.
It is free to the public.
Alright, that answers my question. Are there any other questions, council members?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Thompson and Councilwoman Randolph.
This was the event in the day, the event that we just finished was the Brings to Wellness Health Fund. So we have another one coming up, the faculty giveaway. And normally, we have vendors at that. Um, but of course, if our vendors have to pay a hundred and twenty five dollars, we will have to rethink it and find some other way that they can participate without having to pay a fee.
Councilwoman Randolph, then Councilwoman Carmichael, then Councilwoman James.
I'm just concerned about the hundred and twenty five dollars. As a council, we all owe a little bit of dollars, so. How transitive is that?
That is what we've been doing for a couple of years. Yeah, we've been doing that for a couple of years, that's what we were, uh, what we would do is, um, we would collect the fee, and then we would pay the city. We'd collect all of the vendors and then we paid the fee. But this time, when we went to pay it, they said, I would look at it.
Like a council, Councilwoman Carmichael, then Councilwoman James.
That's, that's, that's what I was wanting, we could address that question as part of, and other than the, sort of. Take a look at that. Maybe you'll look back.
Um, yes, we do, all our buildings on, um, the Y property. Uh, actually, we were all inside this last time, but we have this parking lot. But, you know, we never needed to do that lot.
Councilwoman Jane.
I got my, I got my question, because I wondered, I don't, maybe come for the council, so that was my first question.
Um, but I just think, let me tell you exactly what happened, because she, she's the one who was in charge of collecting the fee and then paying my friend on the fee.
Good evening.
Um, upon going to pay for the vendor fee, when I originally went, I got a warrant, and there was no fee. No, it was fifty dollars. So when I went to pay the fifty dollars, um, at the license plate, they told me that the code had changed and that it was a hundred dollars.
Thank you. Alright, well, Council, we will act on the request for a feed waiver, uh, in due course. Uh, we will give that to you, uh, Mrs. Johnson. Uh, I believe our council secretary may reach out to you to get something in writing, and we will act on it, uh, very soon. Alright, and thank you to the foundation and the Y C A for all the good you do as a council house. We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Alright, that concludes, uh, I didn't see that, then, Councilwoman Thompson.
I would just get a call from the council. Look to you, I will, anytime, you probably should know that. Look to you, I will, anytime you want to show that. Night or morning. Anytime you open your, you see, public. But you're mine, we get it.
Thank you, all right, thank you. All right, we'll move on now to our mayor's report and at this time, our last purpose to go forward.
I have a specific regulation of the ordinance, but within the ordinance, it specifies that vendor fees are, that are, if you're going anywhere from zero to five thousand, it is one hundred dollars. And so that's where you stand in court. So I provided, right, and it's what we wanted out, and we make sure we level set. And that's one of the things that we have revenue, we have revenue meeting coming up soon. So that would be a time to move on to this.
Thank you.
Just wanted, council to note that there was no change to man administrative without authorization. Apparently, the previous transactions were not charged with the ordinance required to the charter. And we were, we are charged to fix it, you're right, so we're just trying to correct that. Also, I have the right to vote, but I just didn't want that reception out. Thank you. I want to. I want to get the Y made, this is, we know it's all not a chance as well. So that was some information. You, the council, if you recall, you requested copies of, requested copies of all the documentation, and it's one of the contracts, if you can see that. There, there, there are some. We made some really interesting determinations. We don't know that I was a full officer, yeah. And this, this whole situation started back when, in the minutes of January twenty-second. We have that, you can follow along with January twenty-second. Where, from that evidence, we're going to move forward with the Y MCA program. The dollar occupancy tax has been left in the basis. And that's in the council minutes, maybe January twenty-second, twenty thirteen, page four, I don't know. And then, right after that, January twenty-second, same minutes of council, pass, there was a passage of order, zero, one oh two, that's twelve is thirteen, that actually set in a vote of two dollar occupancy fee on the retail hotels. Further, there's an order that's imposed, and that order's imposed that a dollar occupancy fee for the police jerseys. Two dollars considered, a dollar in the police jurisdiction. The, in February twenty thirteen, the Y MCA's contract for services was prepared as intended. And that contract for services that the Y MCA executed can be found in your package as well. It's dated November thirteen, twenty thirteen, I O D, page ten, you will see if there's a part of the attorney report where that. Also, in February twenty-six, twenty fifteen, twenty thirteen, considers of the Y MCA contract before the council's approval. And then the council minutes of February twenty-six, twenty thirteen, I O E, page eight and nine, city attorney report is where you find it. Please also see I O G on page nine. And the city attorney report for the approval request that the monies that we collected be in two separate accounts. Was the way it was designated. What we're finding is that two separate accounts with a distribution of seventy-five, twenty dollars. And that been seventy-five of the two dollars, a dollar fifty cents was supposed to go to the Walker Johnson, fifty cents to the Brown. But what we were finding is that that was stipulated, but it was not done. Sort of very sensitive to the situation we just had with the vendor fee. Things are set, but they're not executed right. And so that's, that's what actually was set. On April the second of twenty thirteen, contract for services between the city and the Y. The occupancy is set, it's set. The contract was for three years, it was three years, it was actually one year and two, two one-year options to continue. And so it would run through January twenty-sixth. The contract was from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. A contract was actually executed on Sunday, April the second of twenty thirteen. The twenty-five percent, even though we cannot, it seemed to have gone to the general fund instead of to a separate account for the Y, for the Brown Y. And so contracts, it is interesting because the contract specifies this specific. It states that the Y MCA agreed to transfer the Brown Y MCA because they get to the city itself. That's in the actual contract itself, one dollar. And it said, upon a vote of the council, obviously, the vote of the council never took place, but you will find that in the agreement on April the second of twenty thirteen, contract actually specifies is to be as a shelter total to the city, one dollar. And that's in that agreement. April fourteen, twenty fifteen, approved resolution, resolution one forty-three, fourteen fifteen, votes taken by the council minutes, it's on page two. And consented in that, declared that the twenty-five percent of the occupancy fee would actually go to the Brown Y. That was the first time they actually designated that that twenty-five percent would go to the Brown Y. On the fourteen, also the resolution, cleared for twenty-five percent. I say that, on February the ninth, twenty sixteen, the Y MCA contract was for one year. And the split for the tax at that time was a dollar for Walker Johnson and a dollar for Brown. So the actual split fifty fifty at that time. And also, that new contract adopted all the terms and conditions previously. Through this contract, the second contract, in the eighth term. On February fourteen, twenty seventeen, extension of the Y MCA contract was extended to and that's in the council minutes, eight, February fourteen, on the business, I O ten, that's a rowing ten days, and then page is forty-five. And then in March, the twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen, over the cease and desist vote, the Y MCA contract being ended in February twenty nineteen. And earmarked money would adjust, would go to the general fund. In other words, all the money that they had built at the time, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to the city, was supposed to go to the general fund and have to be distributed. It's in, it's in the vote itself, you can read it in the page six, the financial report, page six, vote was taken in March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. On April the twenty-first of twenty twenty, that was a request to restore, restoration of the laws and tax payments to Walker Johnson. And the council then suggested that the Brown Y MCA be replaced with a commitment match. That happened on April the twenty-first, in the council meeting, it's in the next, on page three, in the citizens' concern section. And so what you, what you were, and then on the, on July twenty-fifth, there was another appearance in the council meeting and requested that to move forward with a vote to restore the laws and fee to Walker Johnson. And the council voted to restore the fee for two years. With annual reporting, half the fee going to Walker Johnson and the other half going to the education to support Michael McCatharine, one of the preparations. So special call meeting, June twenty fifth of twenty twenty. What we've done in addition to pulling together this documentation, actually began to work on the financial reports to try to document the receipts and the distribution of funds that appeared. But I think the thing that's interesting, and the reason I asked if you would allow citizens to speak after this report is because I just got this, I just got this today. And I just got to read this today. And when I read it, the agenda was set, so I just thought I'd ask so that everyone would please have a benefit of this information prior to coming to the council's speech. This really is very, I don't think, because the existing contract that we have specifies that the building should be transferred to the city. And I think it was wise that the city did not do that transaction immediately. What we have done since I have been in office, we've gotten around to page one. And there was a move, getting possibly a risk associated with accepting. So having said that, I would then yield to a first lady purposes to address council or for that meeting.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I won't hold up too much of the time. Waverly, I, and a couple of other concerned citizens have a passion and a desire to see the Brown Y MCA building restored. And we're asking that the citizens will, that council will vote in favor of whatever it takes to get possession of the building. And so that we're asking, Miss Waverly, I, and several with that you all would go on and do whatever it takes to possess that building. And I'm going to ask Miss Waverly to share some facts about that building. I also talked with, well, Mr. John Reese constructed that building back in the time it was built. And he said that that building is, is, structure is very strong and durable, and it's not something that can not be repaired. But I want to just share with you about that building.
Well, originally, we did not have a Y MCA properly. At that time, the colored people, the city itself, the Negroes. And that building came from the first Y that was established of the black kids up on First Avenue and Tremont Street. But before that, it had its beginning at the Presbyterian Church. On, yeah, Dave, well, just enough, I didn't know. And under Dr. C.C. Brown, and he had a boys' club, and they used to play ball. And then eventually, all of that evolved into, y'all forgot, seven closely made team. You had a black team and you had a white team. So the black team came out of that beginning with those young men in high school. In fact, I have one of those suits because my brother played on it and my mom's signature. And so at that time, it was charlatan, call, call Y MCA. And, but we were housed on First Avenue in Tremont. And it did not change up until after the voter rights movement. Because that's where we were, school would laugh, sneak, and the other people in there work with them. So while we were moving out, we would take them down, and then we took them to the Y. And that's how all the young people were organized to eventually help us with the voter rights. Five, y'all know, they marched out of school, go to school, they went out, I don't know, going to all of that. But it happened that Y eventually, they got funds for that building. And it was built and dedicated and called the Y. And at that time, Daniel Robinson, y'all know Daniel Robinson? Well, ha, ha, well, he came here. And you can check the Salem Times newspaper, they, and he was here and he was the speaker of the dedication of that building. I'm just saying that there's a lot of issue in there. And because there is a lot of issue there, and because right now, we don't have anything, not our kids over here on this side, Broad Street. And we need something in our community, for our governance, programs, community service. And if we can, if you all can make it possible for us to see, then it would not be in expense on you because we will apply our funds to get it restored and get it certified as a historical building related to the culture, the life of the people of Black in Selma, Alabama. There's a lot of funds out there, you know, we bought that. And we just need, just to consider, I don't know how you're going to deal with this money, I guess. But if we get the building, you have to restore it, and it always speaks to you. We become organized, we become a five oh one C three, so that we can get funds to help us. And, and we will always work with any other community, partner, you know, with any other community. Our children need a place to go back after school. We have a room for two, to the mom to sit down and go and pick up. And I see the citizens walk around that neighborhood. And maybe we'll go there to pay school, play ball with your kids. So I don't know now. So whatever you all can do, we will appreciate it, everyone, everyone knows. Thank you.
Also, the revised resolution.
I passed.
Oh, you did, you all had the revised resolution? We did one on Thursday night, which we tried, so I hope you all have a red copy and not the one from last Thursday.
Thank you. Thank you. I did share some comments that were made during the session. And those comments were incorporated into the resolution. So I think you can see that it does provide a specific window of time to give these citizens an opportunity to present this project. And so they're asking, the only thing that really asked them is that the city honors, both the city council and votes to improve the potential of this project. And that is acceptable, that that's, that's already contractual, I would end contract. The only thing that will prevent that from happening is the board of the council. So that's the. Are there any questions?
I have a question. One question. You are asking a, a, a resolution. Yes. If it, it go, why? And then, I just, the group just came up here, a part of giving the fund to restore the White MCA.
That's meant, in addition to the city and the citizens' rule, our, 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 has also agreed to, to run off, I had some say, say, to, to assist, they can clear the projects of this nature, of this, you know, there will be some assistance that they would be needing, that's important, and I think that's what, um, the community brings along the questions with this.
And my other question is to the process of step, taking over the property, the city take on in, under their name, um, how would we, uh, say that this building is in the condition that this building is in, and due to this property, step two, for the city to take on, how would we say, for this by the council to make decision on the stage, would we say that this building is, uh, not, uh, they're taking on something that, uh, not up to the standard, uh, for the city to sell it? So how would we, how would we use that, without a lawyer, we have attorney, we have to have, we have to accommodate, according to what I made, I told you before I made the decision that, this property. And I want to make sure that, uh, take on this by the council, of property that already emerged and not in the standard. And the group, uh, put the deal, so I just want to be clear about some things that we can get, clear occasion for that.
It, it started with restoration. It's not something foreign, it's something we do it all the time. It's, it's, uh, it's not, uh, this is not something that itself is not related with. Uh, in addition to that, uh, if, yeah, I, I will vote, uh, I will vote contract, uh, present, but I would, because contract is very clear that the only, because the previous council has already made the commitment, uh, in the contract, the city itself has already committed that once the city council votes that the building could be transferred from the White MCA, if we choose to do it for something else, that's fine. We choose to make some other kind of arrangement, that's fine. But this is a contract that we have, it's in place. All, all I'm saying is, this group is saying, when that happens, they're not looking for the planning development office, the council, they're not looking for the mayor, they're not looking for us to do the work. They're saying that they are willing, as a community organization, to organize, to do this work. And I say that let's give them a chance. I mean, why not give them an opportunity, a chance to do that? I mean, if, if there are only two options here, if there are only two options here, if you either restore with three, you can leave it like it is. We can restore, or we can tear it down. Leaving it like it is is not an option. If, if you, if we restore it, or we attempt to restore it, let's just say we attempt to restore it, and they're not successful, you can still tear it down. But at least you, if, if, you know, if, if we have, we have, we have gone bit over backwards to allow volunteers to do work in our community, why stand in the way of this?
All right, ma'am, thank you. And council, I'm going to ask everyone to refrain from getting further dialogue on this, because we have work session, and we, we table it until we have a chance to go on that. Thank you, so I appreciate it. So thank you, everyone. We have documents in front of you now, there's going to be some support documents, do your due diligence, and review these items on your personal time, so that you can make the, an informed decision when it's time for you to make a decision. But let's move on to other items on the agenda, as we do have many, many other items to discuss.
I, I, I saw the consent agenda when I got here, so I'm really not certain what items on the agenda is actually included in the consent.
Yes, sir.
You all successfully input that, because I didn't see it, I saw it, I see it, but I, uh, number three, I think is the only one, is that right? Number three may be the only one that's on that agenda. So that being said, Mr. Hicks, uh, well, Mr. Hicks, if you could come forward, item number one, like the purchase, uh, new equipment, a mold, uh, new rock equipment, we have all the documentation in front of you, uh, in purchase order, uh, for the unit, sixteen thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars, uh, and asking the council's favorable consideration to see the budgeted, uh, amount of, uh, council.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Hicks regarding, uh, item, I guess we could take item one and two together, ma'am, because there was a resolution that included all the items, I think. That resolution R one seventy-five, twenty-one slash twenty-two, that took into account all the items. I do remember at work session, there was a question regarding that, and so I don't know if that's been answered, so we're in council prime.
You can, and it's been, if we, if we the resolution for that, the question on item.
What needs to be admitted?
That's correct, yeah. That budget line item, officially opted, the new budget to reset line item.
Transfer across the general fund to that specific line item, was that mature?
That's correct.
Okay.
Wait, there's, I think there was an entire budget discussed and, and adopted that included that line item, that extension.
Well, we were told, I was under the impression when the question was asked, were you going to pass, uh, that budget, that group of items, the answer was no, that you were going to deal with things on an individual transaction basis, and that's why you were seeing this being presented with.
And, and that's not, if we're going to deal with it on an individual line. So that's not our question, or that, uh, we've had issues with that in six months. I think we should go through our process.
Well, the issues, I, I'm going to defend the administration, the issues that relates to cultural, was not, uh, an administration issue.
Okay. All right, so let's, um, let's try to come up with a solution for this, ladies and gentlemen.
Because the problem is, is this equipment is immediately available, and it probably won't be available in the next thirty days. So that's.
So we have a resolution in front of us, resolution R one seventy-five dash twenty-one slash twenty-two. And we do need, uh, just as we do with all the other items that we approved, we do need the appropriate, uh, budget line item on that transfer sheet that we usually do. If we can have the treasurer create that for us, I think that could help us with this vote.
Uh, we have the transfer sheet in the budget, it just doesn't say the right number, because we have not adopted that amount that we put into that.
But if we can give that today, so that we could, based on that document, that.
I missed it. Did you hear that?
I didn't do that.
I didn't do that.
Mr. Hicks was trying to do was, he was, what he was trying to do was amend the budget purchase, purchase, because to that, he, the acquisition, he asked for it to have forty-seven thousand, if they can, for those budgets. But the money that he needs to make these purchases is a hundred and thirty thousand, who are hoping, uh, be able to, the other forty-three, ever in the day. That was my understanding.
Okay. Any other discussion, is there a motion from any member of the council?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move forward, because he told us good, we don't keep this equipment in my base, we lay on hold, he didn't get it up, things of a better day, for more. Or no, they, they gave us, yeah, on top of all.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need a resolution to be able to include the cap number?
We need a resolution to include the cap number.
Exactly what we asked for.
We asked for reverse.
Here's, here's, here's what happened, and I did hear that suggestion, or recommendation. In talking with the treasurer, we, we sat down yesterday, I believe, and went through the resolution in front of you right now. I believe the language, I did believe the language that was submitted was sufficient to get the resolution passed. What I'm hearing now is without that budget, that line item number, you can't pass it. Well, that's exactly the item we called ourselves working around yesterday to get this resolution in front of you is what happened. So we have not a disagreement on what was asked, but a disagreement on whether or not this would work.
Go ahead, councilman, Janet Thomas.
Can I make this one? He told us, he didn't come over, he don't, he didn't. He was in the Thursday night, he did tell you, he have a resolution, he's ready to go, because he's long ago, he's, but it's very important for a lot of, actually attached to, this is something where we must move. So my recommendation, Mr. President, is, could we do this, have him to get the resolution? Could we vote, could we vote on moving forward with this equipment and make, and be able to come back in, as an hour turn, have this resolution, um, drawn up to me, and make sure we do that, can we do that? Because at these times, he told us there was a time frame, but you did address that to our.
Right. I do believe we probably can come back, we've done before on other items.
Yes.
And ratified those items, uh, with a vote, the effective date being that of the date of this council. I know we've done that on more than one occasion. And so we need the appropriate motion made, and I would ask that whoever makes that motion stated clearly for the minutes, so that when we come back, that will cut down on the confusion. So are you prepared to make that motion, councilman Tom?
So why make this motion? Can I ask the chair, Franger, a question?
What's this for?
Councilman Harvey, if we make, I mean, if we make this motion, uh, that, uh, the amount of money, of what he needs to go to the auction with you, and we're going to do the documentary, this is suggesting eventually the balance, but she just said, that we all use a hundred thousand, and we need not much more, okay, he's asking for a hundred forty-seven thousand, items across the, three thousand, and you have forty-three left, of the, 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 he's asking for the trucks, for that option. So can we make a motion to move forward with the, um, the tackle of, of race, whether he owns?
Certainly, at two zero turn, two zero turn, on down your track, there are two rolling cars.
Thirty-four.
He's got six, six items.
Six items.
Yes, ma'am.
So you would make a vote to adjust, first.
Whatever you all need, someone make.
We need, you make the account.
I, I, I think, I'm assuming this is correct, I'm, 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 uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, budget regulation.
Instead of a.
If you make it top two, instead of top one, then that would get you in line with.
Five one zero, five five, top two?
Yes.
If you want to vote these, yes. All right, so I'll make a motion that we adjust. On number sixty-two hundred, line item five one zero five five, dot two, for less, one hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Is there a second? Move the property second, uh, motion, valid. Now, councilman, call Michael, are we ready for a question? Well, call him out, clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, councilwoman Christie Thomas, councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Yes. Now, is there an additional subsequent motion that needs to be made?
I made a motion that, um, due to the resolution to the cap and, the, the, the items that we need, the other work, on another day, we attach the resolution to.
The proof is that, well, all right. Which, with the effective date of today's date, which is twenty-seventh, six, okay. All right, is there a second? All right, the motion, uh, was stated and made by councilwoman Jane Thomas, and properly seconded by councilman Randolph. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, madam clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane. Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Yes. Thank you, council, and receive your next item here.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution R one seventy-five dash twenty-one slash twenty-two. I'd like, I'm sorry, I heard that wrong, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution one seventy-five dash twenty-one slash twenty-two.
Is there a second? All right, there is, there is, councilwoman Harville, so move, now, councilman, Michael, properly seconded by councilwoman Harvard, to adopt resolution R one seventy-five dash twenty-one slash twenty-two, resolution to remove personal equipment for public works. Are we ready for a question? Well, call him out, clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Yes. Thank you.
President Young, the resolution you just approved does have the correct line item.
Okay, thank you. All right, next time.
I agree, uh, this is, then, and that's the part I signed, uh, item four, uh, Eric, Mr. Tom, who, that item four, five, six, and seven, uh, show, social, your project, uh, resolution direct, uh, resolution correction, investment amendment, uh, for the, uh, based space, uh, re, al, utility, but, uh, adjustment, correction, written in the, and also, step in the, on, but, uh, the whole Irish.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before you, there was a question that the, uh, Fox, Fox, uh, contract, uh, we approved to take out, uh, the second way of the emergency, that contract is to repair the, uh, alleyway behind, that came in.
This is the memo, dang, dang, twenty, twenty-second. Is this, is that, that's the memo you brought this up? All right, go ahead, ask your question, councilman.
It, it is, it is right off on the line. It is not, it is, this person, we request that, he comes and give us update and pretty much what's going on because.
It is not, it is, this person, we request that he comes and give us update and pretty much what's going on because, you know, we haven't heard the moment so long, and we need to know what's going on because our, we see our, we see everything, but we don't see where. You know, we need to know some update on what's going on.
Sure. So, do we want to vote now, or do we want to wait here for?
We need to wait a different time.
Okay. So is that my consensus from this body that we table until we get a chance to hear, uh, from the engineer? Any objection? Okay, no objection, you can move on to the next one. Was this for the A L M?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we'll table, we'll move on to get the necessary documentation, all right? And I think we have to do three things on that one, correct? We have to pass a resolution, we have to pass an item creating the line item in our budget, and additionally, we also have to pass the, the actual purchase, the, to make pay. So we'll have to do three different things on that, okay? Thank you.
So, this, 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 this is approved of the application of utilities.
This was regarding utilities, power, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I'm asking that, uh, find the allocation of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from street lighting, three thousand dollars from L gas, whatever, the transfer from this city, uh, all that amount, twenty-five hundred, twenty-two thousand dollars, and twenty-four thousand dollars for highway lighting.
So you're asking, in this, uh, budget transfer, that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, be transferred from account number one six four zero zero five three five zero two. You're also asking that, uh, a transfer from account one six four zero zero five three seven hundred in the amount of three thousand dollars. Three, okay, three thousand. So that's a total of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars be transferred to those two accounts where you have for power and power, and the one for highway eighty line. My question is for the street lighting from that account number, okay? The budgeted amount in the street lighting account ending in five hundred is three hundred thousand dollars. And then it says the current balance before this transfer is fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents. But yet we're asking for a transfer of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
My interpretation of this call, not to be interregulized, this call, that is how my would have spent the date in street lighting.
See, and I guess the confusion, it says current balance before the transfer. So it looks, the way it looks to me, and I'm still a novice at this, but it look, the way it reads to me, it says the current balance before this transfer, I would think that there's only fifty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents in there.
I understand what you're saying, but that's the way I would be doing this. As the balance compared as of today, will have spent to this point or to that point, is fifty-four thousand.
Okay, so actually, in that current balance category, we could just, to get the current balance, we could just subtract that fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-seven cents from the budgeted amount, three hundred thousand dollars, and that would give us what our actual current balance is. So we would have at least.
When we do that subtraction, it gives you available balance.
It gives us available, so out of our available balance, we would at least have the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. My, my concern question was, I just want to make sure we were keeping the, keeping it accurate and wasn't taking anything out of the negative amount. But if, if that's okay, if that's the way that should read, then I wouldn't have an issue. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
My question was.
Can we go again?
Yeah, well, yeah, because everybody, I don't know if you understand.
Okay, I, I think what this, what this request is, is this to get us back to where we were twenty-one budget in order to pay the power bills? Because if we had a session and a work session, it would have tried to figure out where we were the same year. Well, let me begin answering that question.
Okay, it's, well, it's not trying to get us to where we were in the last year's balance, it's to try to get us over here. But I think, uh, I, I used, um, uh, some information before we go and compare what we paid last year, I think, um, total last year we paid in utilities, uh, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Year, okay, same year, I think we've already spent three hundred and eleven, this year we've got the same.
We spent, uh, three hundred and sixty-six this year.
All right, and then last year, the same year, that's what we, that's what we have, hold this, that makes.
We, we, uh, spent the, uh, entries each year, uh, as I've learned about, uh, in, in three, over three hundred and something thousand dollars, six hundred and something thousand dollars, or half of the total. That's, that's the concern.
That's what you had, out of the power, you were blaming the, the guys on, you see, all of that stuff.
Let me, let me, let me just add this before everybody comes with this. Um, and I understand that's what we're supposed to do, uh, financial oversight, so I'm very clear, Council. But the fact remains is this power bill has got to be invented for the last while. So, um, I understand the oversight issue, I, I, you're being great stories. I think that's excellent to ask these questions or whatever, but let's also move in a practical direction. We know we do need to go ahead and pay it, um, and perhaps we can get another discussion from a representative that is aware of our specific account to come and address to us, because we do know everything that's gone up tremendously. Our grocery deals have gone up, gas has gone up, basically everything, our red light has gone up. And so I think that I understand the oversight or whatever, but what the treasurer is making the recommendation, and I understand where she's coming from, she's coming to us to say, we need to increase this budget line item to make sure we're able to meet our obligations with Alamo Power for at least the next couple of months or, or two. And, uh, so this issue will come up again, everybody. This is not the last time that we talk about it. And so I'm hoping that we can talk about it later, rather than talk about it a long time tonight. All right, so go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I just thought of a recommendation to, uh, to be friendly, to be, that, uh, our chairperson, that mostly look at our budget. Uh, now, Chairperson, can you put a recommendation to flow to the mapping, the previous month they just said that's on care, uh, the amount, uh, to a being in the way they were.
Yeah, once I get that information, I'll pick them back into you again.
Okay, so thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Harvey. With that said, is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Thank you. All right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Christie Thomas, and properly seconded by Councilwoman, uh, Lisa James, uh, to approve the transfer of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from account number one six four zero zero five three five hundred, uh, and also to move from account number one six four zero zero five three seven hundred, and then amount of three thousand dollars, to move and transfer those amounts to account number one dash six four zero zero five three two zero zero, and account number one six four zero zero five three four zero zero. Council, are we ready for a question? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville.
Yes.
Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Yes. Thank you very much, Council.
I, I would like to make a formal question of this, um, meaning surrounded, whether the council voted to improve lighting yourself by adding LED lighting and, and, uh, bring it to the way to.
Yes, because the lighting, that cost, which on down, it's basically comparable, because basically the same year, it's like, back in three thousand, six, dollars, three thousand, eight hundred dollars per month, so that year, we don't do lighting.
Uh, I still need to.
And request that, thank you. Right, and your next item.
Uh, next item is passing the budget for Delta Trust Fund. Um, by the way, I want to make the balance, uh, in terms of all the ones, and I did talk about that heat up, so we, we got all started to balance this, and I couldn't do that. We got as far as two thousand five hundred awards. Um, this, that was going to be the budget with the list of what's available, uh, from twenty twenty, the, uh, proposed allocation for twenty twenty-one, and then we haven't got the allocation for twenty twenty-two yet. So that was my issue was that, again, balance, it's the bank, because I have a hundred thirty thousand dollars. The bank has more than what we have in the record. No, and you were telling a lot of.
Okay.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I know, you know, I'm in, but, um, A group as well, you had in minutes that we got, uh, the gas, uh, it was two hundred and eighty-five, eighty-seven thousand, uh, twenty, twenty-two. Is that me? Is the, uh, L W Trust Fund, or the gas that's going? You put a gas cap, you have, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and that was the budget for the state gas cap fund. So. This is not the gas, the Delta Trust Fund. No, no, I want, I need, I need this, okay. I know what it is, but, okay, my question was, um, here. So I want to go to twenty, uh, twenty twenty, tell me, in a minute, for the hundred and eighty, twenty-eight, eighty-seven thousand, what is that, was that the Alamo Trust Fund, they should go to twenty twenty-one, the map was supposed to split up into all these. Oh, she got the paperwork. What I'm asking you is, is, Miss Carrie, uh, we talked about this here, and it's on the book, the only thing that I'm asking you, the hundred and eighty, it's on the book, hundred and eighty is about.
President, one way to find a reserve fund, which one?
It's the all these one. We had divided up between ten people, we're supposed to get seventeen thousand, and we're on our all these of bond right here, you got, uh, for twenty, for twenty twenty-one, you got, uh, that's our all these complicated.
I think you're confusing about where you're, what you're talking about, are you talking about on the spreadsheet that she gave?
Yeah, the spreadsheet.
So the spreadsheet is for the all these.
Yeah.
I think it should be, yes.
Well, there's a discrepancy, the spreadsheet, we got, uh, that said that we got two hundred and ten thousand, a hundred, two thousand twenty-one.
And that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying, I know the difference in, because that's what I'm saying. You give us on the spreadsheet, two hundred, but we got in our, in our minutes, it was a hundred and eighty-something. So I'm trying to figure out where.
I, I believe that one, one may help with this, is if we, if we, if everybody had another, uh, document request, that resolution that we got in order for twenty-one to split up, Alamo Trust Funds, all these funds, uh, that would have total or how much we split it. But what I think also was a question of confusion is, if we took a vote on five twenty-seven, to move those bodies for the law of the property, and, and only see the wording in the minutes from five twenty-seven, to see whether that actually, uh, uh, made that, you know, made those thoughts come back together. Because I was overly aggressive when we took that vote, and it was moving one project, one project, so I think that resolution that was made on April, or May of twenty twenty-one should stand, those thoughts should still be the start. And then I think it will help, we all have clarity there, uh, on the resolution, where we go to the first thought from May twenty-one, in this from five of twenty-one.
Yeah, I agree, I think that those, uh, two documents provide to the council, my clarity. Uh, it's one way, one thing to hear back and forth, but it's another thing to see things in black and white. And so I think we need some more clarity on this council. Uh, I don't think we're quite prepared right now to take a vote on this. We need to have those two documents, and so when we reach this juncture, I think it's best for us to review a little bit more, then come back at this end, so that we can be there. So is there any objection in holding off and allowing us to give these documents that are just being requested? Any objection? All right, thank you for no objection, and we can now move on to the next. You go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas, and then Councilwoman Thomas. I'm sorry, what's it, so, Councilwoman Thomas?
Uh, Miss Carrie, the. Where is it?
We'll go to Councilwoman Christie, and come back, and you gotta play it, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
That's the clarification, but we already have, um, available. Everybody should know that you can use that money, um, if you have a project.
Yes.
It's not holding up.
You from using that money. Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. The treasurer, uh, sent to us a document, I believe yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, and it does have what's in our accounts, and it showed us from twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty. And so, uh, it did show us our balances, and everyone does have something in there. So if you do need a project, of course, that fits with the amount that you have, uh, then that will not hold true. So let's not spend money that you don't have, because you can't.
My account with my expression here, um, I thought we had, uh, straightened out. My three thousand was not put back in, my total was four hundred and six thousand thirteen. I see where you have the four thousand and some, it was a project, what happened was we did share with the tree company, it was supposed to be, we were holding on this, uh, three times. It was three council people project, it was, uh, Harvey, Clay, and Matt. And it, it came from public work, the bill was seven thousand and some, and we voted two times to say where it's supposed to come from. And when I checked my account, it, at first, we had taken three thousand for share with, it was not supposed to came out. And I, um, secretary showed to P P O on it, it was supposed to reverse back into my account, but it never did go back in. You have me as a balance that incorrect, and I would like for you to look at that and, um, edit and pour that. If I'm correct, at the bottom of that, uh, requisition, this says unappropriated funds, remember? That is, that is not a designated line item, it needs a designated line item for rest, but that is. I need to designate a line item.
Unappropriated is not a line item. We need a designated line item for that, for that to be moved to, we have that discussion to go over. About unappropriated, because there's no such thing as unappropriated line item. I can't move mine to somewhere else where I.
No, you took my money out of my distribution there for a project, and it's never been done. And that was share with the tree.
Yeah, but at the bottom of that requisition says unappropriated, unallocated, I can't move it to to another place, so I don't know where I move it to.
Hold on, it it we. Uh, Councilwoman, wait, oh. Councilwoman.
Our control was prepared, these were the time, it's open, it started, it started off thick. So at the bottom of it, I have a note that said, this is my okay. And she came as the treasurer, she was trying to figure out what is unappropriate. So they went again and took the three thousand from Councilwoman Jane and Thomas, which they are converting back. Soon as we can find out which line item needs to come from, and her balance will go back to six thousand something. Right now you have like five thousand something. You have it, it's just not showing it on paper, because they had converted back.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I just suggest that I would create a lot of less expenditure, so if uh.
If that will get us back to this, then that should be wrong, so uh. Would you like to make most, Councilwoman Thomas? You know what? Okay, can we have that, okay, for next slide, so that we can move ahead, so you go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I spring for you to, if she didn't, the paper, do you have a line item for us to make here?
Okay, what's the problem you want to come out of, and where you want to come out of, create another line item into council budget, if you want to create a line item.
Let me see, but there is a pretty, uh, pretty kind of, uh, the other part of the first.
Well, let's, let's follow the previous suggestion, let's come back to it at the next meeting, so that we can proceed on. It's not ready yet, we're not ready. So let's continue on to the next slide.
No, this is right there, we can message you.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't, don't try to cut me off, what was that this uh about? That, that came out of my, that came, that came out of my account, my distribution there. Which a project has never been done. It, it come out of my, my account.
Yes.
And and it's not okay, because that was my distribution there for my board. And it came out of my money, and now I can see what she's saying, but you took money out of the account. And the work has never been done, and I, I will, what's, what about that, my money back on that, it's all right.
I want you to step back.
Hold on. All right, hold on, hold on. Let's get it kind of quiet in chambers too, because there's a lot of talking, and that creates further confusion. So we have confusion, so let's bring some leverage to this. All right, Councilwoman Thomas, you stated your issue. I understand, and I think several of the constituents understand where you're coming from. We're going to try to work with the treasurer to get that issue resolved. I understand your agreements, and I think we all understand your agreement. But what we also are trying to do is to make sure that this much needed work that you told us about, is to, because at the end of the day, that's more important than agreements or anything else. So Councilwoman Carmichael offered a very good suggestion to us, to bring forth a motion to us to get this work done. And in the meantime, we'll get your issue actually resolved. I think that that probably is the best appropriate remedy for us right now. So we're going to get to the bottom, we want to get this work done that you requested, we know that it needs to get done, okay? With that said, counsel, may we proceed on with our next item, and come back to this as well, with Councilwoman Carmichael brings forth the proper motion. Thank you, counsel.
I remain. Good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
This position, this would uh allow voice department to have four attendants on control because of the chief, we only had one supervisor. Supervising uh controlling, since I know it's controlling, and one that graduates uh this past week. And I will explain it one Monday, we need these additional, this additional supervisor on each of. So that uh the board will be so much, one supervisor from the House of Lords, and supervisor to, so I'm asking that the council. Vote to approve this position, as hopefully the treasurer, who would only have five thousand dollars.
All right, so currently, how many lieutenant positions are we budgeting for? The, the, the budget that was passed uh back in December, how many lieutenant positions did that actually include?
I looked it up, budgeted uh it has five.
Okay, so we currently do have, so it's not four that we are currently budgeting for, we're currently budgeting five.
Right.
Okay, so essentially, you're coming to us, this won't bring enough under five, this will bring up to six. So this would be a sixth lieutenant position that we would be making available.
That's correct.
All right, do we have the appropriate line item that we need to do this, do we have that?
It's already budgeted.
So we just want to, so what exactly are we, really you were asking?
That the council vote to uh put this position, this lieutenant position back in.
To approve this place lieutenant position, eight, sixth lieutenant position back into the.
That's correct.
Okay, that's supposed to be a question. Are there any questions regarding this request made by our chief? Are there any questions?
Correct.
Okay, all right, with that understanding and the chief reserving, I wouldn't, didn't want to do. Uh, is there a motion to approve? There it is, there it said. All right, please allow the record committee to reflect that it was moved by Councilman Johnson, Department of the Senate, by Councilman Carmichael. To approve the addition of a sixth lieutenant position in the budget for the summer police department. Are we ready for the question? Roll call, Madam President.
President, yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harvey. Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilwoman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas. Councilwoman Thomas. Danny. Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, I want to say we have a question.
Chief, I've got one, I said, thank you to um your team and all the team on the situation, and the neighbors are feeling.
Hey, Chief, one more question.
Yes, sir.
I know recently, I think on last week, uh, we got a new officer.
Yeah.
Uh, for sale. Since, I guess, June of last year, twenty twenty nine, how many new police officers have we hired?
Uh, I was talking about eight.
Eight, so how many?
How many is that, twenty?
By force, how many do you have?
That plus they had thirty three.
We're thirty three.
Yes, sir, like I said, we're waiting here one Monday, eleven.
Okay, another one here on Monday, how many are we budgeting for?
We were basically for fifty five, because we allowed uh the uh funds for the physical bones.
We did.
Yes, that's, that's down to like the.
Keep moving up towards that fifty five.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Chief, we appreciate it.
I have nine, uh, if uh addressing one authority. Uh, the whole council, if anyone wants to change their position. Change the. I have ten, ten percent restriction. Enter the problem on transfer. Both councils here every state. Being done, we go, I have eleven, five thousand dollars deep. Uh, on the department spending. Um, checking on the department spending, because one, then one who goes to stay in their position. None, move it.
Not moving.
I have. The. The C Y camera system. We have, uh, we are in the process. Find the identified appropriate attorney to do some legal research, that's the council's question. My position had changed, the public, I'm still saying we can move on, but we got it, council. Uh, so we are. I, if, if that's done, so but I'm hoping that we can move swiftly on this issue, because it's definitely needed. I have thirteen on the agenda, we have already addressed, council. Uh, do you still want to read the document already? I have fourteen, I want to start by um saying that uh. I call, I shared with Councilman Carmichael. At the end of the work session, that I was prepared to sign, I heard you signed the contract. Because I knew president was signing. And um, but by the time the contract got to me. It had changed, councilman voted on it, you already voted on the contract. By the time it got to me, there were three different versions of it. And we need to clean this, this matter up, I can't, you know, I don't want to move forward with, without us getting this, this right. One that had uh council, president's name on it, and you know, for signature. And then there was another one that had council, president, and the mayor's name on the side, and there was another one. That had the mayor's signature assigned. And uh, the other thing about this is, is uh, in order for, you know, we, we're trying to clean things up, trying to make sure we get this thing right. I know this is going to can and kick down a road, and I commit to uh you, my brother, and mentor you soon, that. I really want to get this done, but I want to get it done the proper way, to make sure that we don't uh have any backlash on this. So what I, I, what I would like to do is to engage the city attorney to clean this up, and to request a special call, you know, the council. For the purpose of getting, so the council would like to do an answerable vote for something, but this contract, you need support. Uh, and uh, I don't know if you read it before you decided not to sign it, uh, but it does need.
Hold on, I understand that hands have been raised, and I don't open up that can, because recognition of one means from now on, I will recognize everybody. And our meeting is already lengthy enough, so we can get only, if necessary, one can get only agenda to discuss it. But I'm not going to start opening up that process of taking hands from the floor. So I, I, I've done that before, and I know I paid her, but uh sometimes it is not, you're going to make me pay. So forgive me, it's truly, truly not worth it. And so uh, Mayor, you offered your comments, council, is there anyone on the council ballot that has a comment in regard to that? We'll go to Councilwoman Carmichael, then Councilwoman Thomas.
I don't see. Well, in one of the versions that hit my desk, there were some edits on the first page. And, and then again, you know, I've just been just in Monday, and I just haven't had time unraveling. But I, my, my, my sense is, is that we really, uh, let's get one more pass at this to make sure we get this right. Every contract that we do uh with outside uh agents and entities, we are supposed to receive with the legal. There is not specified in this contract, there are some things that I just know that if we don't do this right, it could come back to bite us. I just want us to do it right, I see it right, and because I will say, I do intend to say.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Thomas, and then, did you, Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, I got a question. The redevelopment contract?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
The redevelopment contract, it's the first, first contract. And uh, we had never, never did the decision, we didn't talk about. And then we received another contract, we only received two, third one, and I thought that we agreed to vote to move forward on that.
I think the council has voted in the affirmative for the contract, maybe more than once, I know at least one time. Mayor, I hear what you're saying, um, yeah, sooner rather than later, we can do a special call. Can we try to go ahead and schedule a special call for early next week? Because uh, uh, the, the director and, it's right, they're very, very patient with the council. We appreciate their patience, as well as the service of what they do for sale. So if we can get that special call, just to handle, just that item on next week, I think the council will appreciate that. If that's what's necessary to get this done. Okay, so we'll get together money or two to next week, and try to get this resolved, thank you.
Uh, item fifteen, letting them approve L W State uh Council yard project.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, citizens of Selma. Um, first, I want to acknowledge the council, and thank you all so much for putting it on your consent agenda and approving the project. Um, really quickly, I did want to run through, so that the citizen can kind of get an idea of what this project is. I'm going to try to turn this into a. You got it? Okay, so basically, um, the city of Selma with our partners, and if I call your names, you guys will come on up. Um, our partners for this project were Archer Vibe. The Selma chapter of the Link Incorporated, as well as um Mr. Trey Taylor, who is not here, um, somebody, because they have some unfortunate news. Um, but overall. Overall, the project this year, um, targeted elementary, middle, and high school students in Selma schools. Particularly Payne Elementary School, um, Art Hudson's theme academy, and Selma High School. And the grant was written through the L W State Capitol of the Arts, and it was to create a community art uh and history bureau project. And so what we did was, um, over the course of January, there have been twenty one sessions, uh, within our school system on Friday. Um, and so the students, um, the first um set of sessions were the research portion. And so the students were tasked with going back and researching Selma. Um, its founding in eighteen twenty, as well as pre-settlement, um, the reconstruction era, the civil war era, the civil rights era. And so once they did their research, and if you guys look at those pictures, those are pictures of the sessions and classes, and they're doing their research. Um, and so once they did the research, and they really figured out what part they were inspired the most about, then we moved into the design sessions. And in those design sessions, the students really put um their sketches and their drawings. And in those design sessions, the students really put their sketches and their drawings together. And these are some images of their, them in session. We received over fifty drawings and sketches from the students depicting art from several different eras in Selma history. And we also had a phase in there where, if you guys look at the screen now, you'll see some of the artwork that the students created. I mean, I was blown away by the, the art that they came up with, this actual artwork that was set for our students. And I'm not going to give you guys too much because I wasn't surprised about the mural. But this image here is a butterfly and it actually has very significant landmarks throughout Selma history in the butterfly. And that was done by one of Selma high, high school students. Which is the actual painting of the mural. And like we said, that is a community effort. And so our first painting day is going to be May the 13th. And we invite everyone in the community to come out and support and hang on. The project is second painting day, it's May the 13th. And then we will have a public unveiling. And that is open to all schools, all community members, all organizations. And we could not have done this, one without the Alabama State Council of the Art, our Art Revive, Becky Youngblood. I'm going to turn it over to Becky, if you want to say anything.
I just love the art show, of course, I've mentioned, in the city, support our community through the art. And love the collaboration with the city, and I'm new there, and Link, and we said a lot of things for it. Winford was one of the instructors, our partnering director. And he has, he's really taken an interest, he's really good with education and that. And he's really good at identifying people that's not participating and reaching out to that poor child. And that child is a big, big student in the project, really special how that happened. I think we've done a lot of things for it.
Thank you so much. And I just want to take this time to really acknowledge Art Revive for everything you guys do in our community. But particularly in this program, because actually a lot of people don't know that this is year three. And Art Revive, every year, dedicate resources to bring artists into Selma, whether that's teaching our students poetry, whether that's mural projects, whether that's design techniques. And so they really put their money where their mouth is. And we thank you guys so much. And for the mural project, they are donating fifteen hundred. Because last week I said a hundred thousand dollars and they were like, oh my God! But it was on the mountain. But Art Revive is going to pay fifteen hundred dollars to this project. And then I'm going to turn it over to Principal Curtis to talk about the project from the school's perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I would just say, thank you again to Art Revive. Anytime we asked, they always say, yes. So thank you for your resources and also anything that involves our children, our scholars, you know, if they're beneficial. This opportunity allows our scholars to, there's multiple disciplines to be integrated in this particular project. We know that if anything is cut in the school system, it starts with arts first. So we're very excited that links always come in and provide innovation for our scholars. And also the arts. We have scholars who know that they are not, all scholars are not academically qualified. But we do have cultural intelligence in our scholars. We have scholars who are very visual and artistic. So this allows us to practice, so we're very elated to have another opportunity with the links, with Art Revive and all of the partners. So thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. We also have Mr. Raymond here.
And this is our visual arts teacher for, I think, what, two, three years there. So she's also one of you all.
And I just want to thank Ms. Wilton and Ms. Youngblood. This really has been her inspiration. And for to be a school clerk member and be co-hand, in the building with our students and brainstorming these wonderful ideas. To give them an opportunity to give back to our community and to give our scholars opportunity to leave a mark in the community. And they have more than one project to take up. And just to have young people that feel that they know their daughter, their voices can still be heard and shine a ray of hope for our community. And for all the people that live in the community here, so by, I feel that everyone takes the time out to help to contribute to the world. These are truly designed by our student art. And so this is for generations to come, they continue what they've done in our community. And Principal Curtis for being the inspiration for having a STEAM program. And she emphasized, she said, we're not Selma, we're STEAM. Because we want to have an art integration, art integration. So, and it's not going to be focused on one aspect, but transcending the generation to tell Selma's story to the eyes of our fellow children.
All right, so the links incorporated. Again, this expanding our arts in our schools was the brainchild of the Selma Alabama chapter of the links incorporated. In the first year, we got a D S B grant in partnership with the Selma school. Of course, we all know COVID hit, so we need to produce it. But you and Art Revive is right there. So I want to turn it over to our president, Evelyn Devin. She is here, but we're going to hear from our vice president, Ms. Dr. Margaret Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you, councilmember. On behalf of our president, Dr. Evelyn Devin, we are excited and delighted to be able to provide this vital contribution. Also, we are delighted that we're able to achieve the great work because that is one of our mission springs and then started to impact many communities and households in Selma and all of our purposes. So thank you and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you guys so much. As well as our mayor, because.
Should we take them round?
Yes.
All right, count three. One, two, three. Am I looking? Pull it down a little bit, there you go, a little bit. There we go. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. All right, very good.
I'm going to be Sam Perkins. I do want to acknowledge the initiative. Well, the council, because outside of just what we're doing with art education for our students, this is actually a community revitalization and a community development project. And so I am going to just be so happy to see that mural on the wall of the local county with fourteen, Broad Street. So every time citizens ride down Broad Street, they'll be able to see the creations that our students. Were able to create and also the life that that mural is going to bring back into their household. So thank you guys so much, and thank you, Sam Perkins.
Very good.
I'm final, I'm final, I have to.
No, it's late evening. We sell our business, go ahead, Sam Perkins.
My final, I have to achieve an announcement. And we have the university partnership of Alabama continuing invitation and the Alabama Association of Chief of Police.
Hold on, listen, man. Can we get Chief Wolford back here? Chief Wolford? Will you please come back?
I know he was here.
Come on up here, come up here, Chief Wolford.
I was proud of the surprise.
They put some.
You know, I'll announce it to see.
Go ahead, man.
On behalf of the university partnership of Alabama continuation, the Alabama Association of Chief of Police. I take great pleasure in announcing that Chief Kenton K. Wolford has now completed A D I L training in the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program. And was awarded this certification on March third, twenty twenty-two at the Alabama Association of Chief of Police conference. Earning this certification is not only a credit to Chief Wolford, but also to the city of Selma for its contributions to the advancement of law enforcement. Principal, this is great.
Just want to say thank you to the mayor, the city council for your support, other police force. Like I said, I've talked to some teams to help have the support like I do. And I just really wanted to say thank you all for your support.
We got the certified chief. All right. Thank you for those speeding fifteen items. And I will proceed, I believe we adopted everything that belongs in the territory. So.
Yes, you did.
I think you're good.
Present, I just want to add, there are four or five other items I want to know about with that. That's everything on this.
Exactly, very good. Okay, now, at this time, I believe Councilman Carl Michael indicated earlier that we need to have a dedicated session. How long do you need, Councilman Carl? Four minutes. Okay, so are you prepared to make that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we need an executive session for a period of two minutes. According to section thirty-six dash twenty-five, eight, seven.
Is there a second? We will prompt a second if this council goes into executive session for someone to Alabama law. Are we ready for questions? Or call now, or.
President, yeah?
Yes.
Councilman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas. Councilman Carl Michael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunn.
Right, we have a session for twenty minutes.
I'm barring it until tomorrow, but, oh, you know what?
Until tomorrow.
Yeah, until tomorrow.
Until tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you. But I substitute my thing. Because I got it. Everything else is coming up.
I can tell you better than the court.
You did.
These kids grow up so fast. My daddy getting married this past weekend. Beautiful.
I'm going to lay it down.
I mentioned, I made a copy for her. And still, okay, he didn't ask me. There's something, something he and I can talk about. Well, I gotta give him his set of the mayor's reports. I'm going to lay something.
I don't know. I go back to the bottom.
I put everybody out. Let's try. Let's try. I'm in the wrong chair. I got you. I'm in the wrong chair. Okay. I'm, I'm, Councilman Harville. All right. Council, be up. Remove your favorite sessions that most go back to your own movement. Is there a second? It's been moved by Councilwoman Johnson and property segment. By Councilwoman Lisa James to go back into regular session. Are we ready for a question?
What time you going back?
Yeah, um, yeah, what's the time?
Eight eighteen.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go back to the regular session at eight eighteen P M. Are we ready for questions? Roll call now, Clark.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes. All right, thank you, Council. Uh, that concludes that, uh, for the beginning of the session. Uh, committee reports, okay, we did those at the work session on Thursday, so I don't believe we need to go back until that's done, because you've done it already. Uh, at this point, we're on unfinished business and new business. It's unfinished business and new business. Yes, we'll get Councilman, Councilman Thomas and then Councilman Carmichael.
We wrote on that, uh, in that treasure line item for the garden, and that is green.
The budget line item for the green. Yes, I think the treasurer sent us a, an email.
Yes.
Regarding that, uh, is someone able to make that motion? All right, let's, let's, next session, let's stick to the agenda. Ain't no commentary. Let's stick to the agenda. But you asked about the community garden.
Yes, I asked you.
Motion.
You sent the email. Uh, you want me to look to the email?
Go ahead.
If you're going to make a motion, I'm looking for it. Go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead with another business side of my plate, I feel you.
I'm going ahead, Council.
Uh, the, uh, pre-cutting, uh, in the, uh, I did have sufficient funds to cover the seven thousand dollar contract that we were discussing, which were unappropriated. So, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to expand that Shelby pre-cutting contract that includes the Port One, Three, Seven, Three, that, that we voted on a little while back, uh, to extend out of public count sixty-two hundred, uh, line item five-one-six-four-nine.
Six.
Miss Bruce, can I speak on that?
Yeah.
Now, that's, uh, a lot of, uh, except tree, uh, okay, now, all four of the trees need to be cut. I want to make sure we equally, uh, they have to give the money. I, I understand from the sale operation of our team, I'm wanting more, they need to be spread well. Uh, so I want to make sure we all maybe give a little, a little bit of time to do some treeing. Is that, and Council, you can hold things up on my special cost.
All right. All right. Uh, Councilman Carmichael, will you state your motion?
Do I need to?
Did you? Yeah, restate your motion, please.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to expand the Shelby tree cutting service purchase order that we voted on on our back, that we originally voted on to help from the unappropriated. If I can turn my, if I have a chance, uh, or to, uh, to extend that out of public count sixty-two hundred, line item five-one-six-four-nine, which is tree.
All right, is there a second? It, it, all right, it's moved and property segment, uh, the motion made by Councilman Carmichael. Uh, are we ready for the question? Roll call now, Clark.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas, Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, also, I think Council will be in the, on that chart.
Uh, I've got it right here. The, uh, balance is, uh, let's see, thirteen thousand, uh, seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. So, we, we are extending seven thousand of that, so I need to be separate. That's right, that's right. But we, we, we can adjust that, remember, when I made it, this, this was something that of the board's record, it was off us last year. Y'all remember that, and we tried to get it done, and it's not been done, and so just now.
All right. Thank you so much, Council, for your votes on that and, uh, the discussion. Now, we did receive a memorandum from our treasurer concerning the community garden. Community garden has a bank balance of three thousand one hundred seventy dollars and ten cents. In order to budget money for use, a revenue source must be created, use of the excess reserve, and that's item number thirty, dash four thousand, forty-nine, one hundred. All or portion of that money can be budgeted into the revenue line. Also, the expenditures need to be budgeted as well. So, based off of the recommendation from the treasurer, we first need to create a budget line for this particular, uh, expense for the community garden. And with that budget line item, we recommended that be thirty, that, that number that you gave us, Ms. Taylor. All right, Council, is there a motion to create a budget line item for the community garden thirty, dash four thousand, four nine, one, zero, zero? Is there a second? All right, so move the property segment, that we create the community garden budget line item thirty, dash four thousand, forty-nine, one hundred. Are we ready for a question? Roll call now, Clark.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas, Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes. Okay, so now, Councilwoman Thomas, what is the amount of the expenditure that you need to come from that facility line?
What is that? Pay for me.
But I, I haven't.
And we often, for the record, every time we use the God, we always trying to think whatever we use to keep it up. We used to keep it up, except for the, they can't, they can't put it up. Anytime we use it, it's, it's, it's a change problem. If they want to know where it came from, it's, uh, the, the shell, and it's, it's, it wasn't what they got. That's where it came from.
I don't see, it was a purchase order? It's gonna say Regent's Card. Okay.
So, you need to go back and pull.
So, this purchase is in the amount of five hundred sixty-one dollars, twenty-two cents? That's what I'm seeing on the Regent's Card?
What is it, Ms.?
Uh, five hundred sixty-one dollars, twenty-two cents?
Yes, and we take it out. They have a good fence up, you've been putting up, uh, for the last five seconds, and having our garden. It's a problem for people, uh, the dogs and the other people who get to spray the pot. And, uh, we have to make sure that we don't have anybody get sick. And they, the last garden we had, we had ours, we, somebody, uh, went in there and they sprayed, killed all of them. And, uh, we want to do, I don't want to get nobody, so just have, uh, a lot of people out.
Yes, ma'am. All righty, I don't see our treasurer, but I want her to make sure she hears the motion that's about to be presented, so that, uh, she'll know.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
You need to go back and, uh, because, uh, Oliver, ever since I've been doing the, uh, returning the doctor, we also.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if she's going, going to do it the right way, then you go back to pull out.
All right, all right, so, Council, we have the four of us. Uh, is there, is there a motion to approve expenditures for the community garden in the amount of five hundred sixty-one dollars, twenty-two cents, with funds to be dispersed from the new created community garden line aisle? Is there a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second? All right, please allow me to make a replay, this was moved by Councilman Carmichael and property segment by Councilwoman Christie Thomas to approve, saying expenditure, are we ready for a question? Roll call now, Clark.
President Young.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harville, Councilwoman Christie Thomas, Councilman Carmichael.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jane.
Yes.
Councilman Randolph.
Yes.
Councilman Jimmison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes. Right, thank you so much. Any other unfinished business?
No.
No, yes, ma'am.
This is up to you.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Johnson? Go ahead.
Well, uh, I just want to ask you here, I've finished wrapping this off, but, but first I have to, I'm sorry. Uh, I got to fly around and, 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 uh, what's the best way for me to do this? The first time, or I might go up and, uh, this, then I, the words, we finish off each other. And I just need you to, I mean, like, I need you to, to pick yourself up, uh, and I'm trying to make sure that I'm good, and if I can sit back. I'm just, I'm trying to get this on the road, I need to do it, uh, I mean, you know, wrap this up. Yes.
You didn't say you're on?
Yes.
I can handle it. I find that it's tough to handle, and you work out, you need to, behind you.
No, I'm not even in the manner though. Okay, hold on, I'm ready. It's, 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 it's. Right, I want to, I'm sorry, myself, uh, like they won't.
Okay, yes, thank you, and I'm sorry, Councilwoman, you correct. That's not all the agenda, so let's move on. Yeah, let's move on. The new, didn't, I just ordered new, new agenda, but I thought we had set up a precedent that we talked about in the work session, so we would have, uh, this extra, but, uh, I'll, I'll follow it from now on. It's okay. Eric, 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 all right, let's go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
I would like to say. I can't even hear you, it's nothing. Can you see? I've been working here for six years. We have to talk. We have to talk. People fail when they operate, giving this president, I'm talking to, do this, because it's not the place that I want to put it. But the roller club, that's got the instrument, uh, and, uh, uh, why it was, uh, there in that area. Uh, they call me, they put the painting, and you know, the contractor brought the, uh, attention there, it has to be placed in the ground. It has to be, uh, placed in the ground, in that area over there, before the, uh, the area over there, uh, gamble, gamble. Before they put it down, they gonna have to, uh, it needs to be, uh, some public worker, come out and be go over there and, uh, build a pop, though, it was, uh, was not a good area, but we got to place it, because they got it, uh, they got to be put in, well, that area, play. They gonna have to, uh, he said, it, it, it's that, uh, the president's house right now, and he called me, and he said that, uh, these five times, that, uh, we need to, done, we place it in the ground, because they attach the instrument, they have four types of instruments. And on that only area that we gonna put it in, we talk, that area needs something, oh, you know, we gonna place it in that area. And, uh, if anything that I need to, have to, uh, public work, uh, recreation, uh, go over there to see what we need to do, it, uh, we need to put that in paper. It's coming from, the roller club, for, 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 for.
Okay, all right, that's, that's what we need to do.
Well, that's not a video.
Okay, so do we need to take another vote on it?
We, we need to check it, yes, because it, it's, it's gonna have to be, all the, gonna have to be, we gonna have to have somebody probably put it, have to put together everything.
Okay, so that's a day-to-day operation, so that's gonna be somebody from other works doing it, or do we need to do a separate contract?
I don't know if we got somebody from other work, I don't know, maybe have to equip the, the instruments.
Okay.
I want, where, somebody to put it together, we need to get someone.
Okay, so it sounds like to me, the, you need to bring us back a contractor to do this work, and we need to approve that contract so that that work can be done. That's what it's kind of like to me.
Yeah, I, I can't think back, I'm talking about eight ago.
Okay.
We just, we just found stuff, so the contractor got to put everything. Yeah, they got to put everything in, I, I just don't want, I don't want to get, get tore up or, I want someone with the, the no touch, to put this down. And also, it has to be where, it has to be placed in the ground.
Okay, so, okay, that's a contract, bring us back something to vote on. All right, any other unfinished business?
The chairs, okay.
Go ahead, Council, uh, want to talk to you about chairs?
Yeah, everybody got the email, they sent the letter.
Uh, for the Dr. Bonala, we had that, yes, and I think we, at work session said, we were supposed to be getting something from the attorney.
What I, what I did was, uh, two things, I talked with, uh, attorney Chestnut, and I sent communication to the league. I haven't heard back from the league, actually, one of the attorneys has left the league, one of the, I wrote, but I wrote two, but I'm still expecting an answer back. And, uh, it, it probably will boil down to the only two ways to handle declaration of a public purpose or a contract with the group.
All right, so, when you hear that from the league. All right, so when you hear that from the league, then we'll be prepared to do a vote on it. We don't have that vote chair, so soon as we get that information back from the league. And so, soon as he gets the information back, then I think.
Why do you have to select reading?
Well, I think he might have, I, I grew up, not listening.
I have the information I need in either all form. I was waiting on confirmation. For whether or not we need to pursue one as opposed to the other. It's either going to be a public purpose declaration and a resolution or a contract. And.
Okay.
Which one makes the most sense depends on what I'm hearing back.
Okay, so we're waiting, again, with that, where I said, we're waiting to hear that.
And this is from the selected readings in part two.
And we.
And I did want to say, the council.
We are.
We took a vote.
To declare.
And then we declare a date for you.
Okay, so we're where, we're where? Councilman Carmichael.
I'm, I'm, I believe that was for. That, that was taken. I remember.
That we got there.
That's several events.
Seven days.
One is taken.
But it's more than.
That's a ticket.
That's a ticket.
Yeah, but it's not a.
And so it's not a public purpose.
I think, I don't think it would be.
But anything that's open to the public, we could, but particularly against, exactly, understood. But we're waiting to hear back, and then we're going to determine exactly what our role will be in taking the chair. And it will not be, and we get that ticket, because that's the thing, and then it's not going to the public. So I think we got this. Go ahead, Council.
I've been made aware that. Contract for. The river, where, because I've been, they, and I'm curious as to. Why. That, that, we can't, we can't answer to that. If you're going, I'd like to make a, a, or what else, or a business of outstanding, of comparable invoices from fiscal year twenty-one. And. Invoices, comparable invoices to date of fiscal year twenty-two. Yeah, probably a bit of. This. They, they wanted. Great, clean as a river. That, that, you know, had so much talk about last year. I know. It was, it was ready. It wasn't actually ready.
What's the difference?
Okay.
Okay, so you're looking, you're looking to that? To check off.
Kim.
I didn't know what this.